For the regular meeting of the Charter Township of Garfield for July 22nd, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Anne, can we have a roll call, please?
Schmuckel.
Here.
L. McManus.
Here.
Corn.
Here.
Lap.
Here.
Uh, McCumber.
Here.
J. McManus.
Here.
As noted that Augustinelli is absent and excused.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning and at the end of each meeting. So here's your first chance to come forward and let us know whatever you'd like to let us know. So we'll open public comment.
Hello, my name is Steve Lyman and I'm here on behalf of Oak Park Apartments and Oak Terrace Apartments. We purchased both of those properties in 2023 Oak Terrace and then 2024 for Oak Park. The pilots for both of those properties have expired and so we will be looking, we've applied, but we are looking to get pilots for those in the future. And so I just wanted to introduce myself. I know that we can't go through much from what Chris said, but the main process, or the main goal that we're looking for is just to maintain the affordability of those. They've been affordable for a long time and obviously pilots help with that. So, well, I'll be back in the future, I'm sure, for any questions, but thank you.
All right, thank you. And I see a copy of your letter in our packet on your, on your desk. Should have been a copy of this letter as well. Thank you, Steve. Anybody else for public comment? I don't see anybody else running forward, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to review and approval of the agenda. I'd like to add an item under new business. We'll move item D down to E and add item D, which is discussion around opening up the assessor position, hiring for an assessor. So new business D and then just move D down to E. And so now if anybody has any conflicts of interest, now would be the time to state those, otherwise entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes, July 8th, 2025, regular meeting, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $61,769.97, recommend approval. Updated payment amortization table for special assessment Ridgeview Court resurfacing, receive and file. Consideration of Lake Point PUD, major amendment, Oak Hollow multifamily introduction and set, public hearing for August 12th, 2025, recommend approval. In consideration of Marengo 31 Water Main Extension, closeout and turnover documents, recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there any item that the board, anybody on the board would like to have removed and placed elsewhere? Any item staff would like to have removed? Any item somebody in the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar.
Support.
Motion made and supported to adopt the consent calendar as presented. Any further discussion on that? Anne, can we have a roll?
Augustinelli.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
L. McManus.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
And J. McManus.
Yes, thank you. Correspondence, Chris, I just see the one from Traverse Connect.
So I just receive those periodically and I just want to share them with you. Obviously, we have an agreement with them, so I just, any information they send along, I want it to be yours as well. So that's why it's there, just for your review.
The ones on the table tonight, thank you.
Actually, it's in the packet. It should be, it should be in the packet.
Well, the TC Connect one's in the packet and then the other ones were on the table tonight, so. Okay, well, move on to reports. We'll start with the county commissioner.
I really like how you run your meetings. You just keep moving forward. Lauren Flynn, Grand Traverse County Commissioner, District Two. In our study sessions, we continue to hear from our departments about their budget needs, seeing kind of a pattern of issues with some of the departments with retention issues. So there has been an ad hoc that I've been on for a little bit, but we did have a really vibrant conversation this morning about what we can start working forward to make Grand Traverse County a really great place to work and come and move to and have some more benefits and more things to really give the employees a good pride in their, in their employment with Grand Traverse County. Also, in today's sessions, we brought forth from our ad hoc recommendations for the spending process of cannabis and opioid dollars. Both plans have like a Plan A, Plan B where we're half or there's a certain percentage that hasn't been decided yet will go towards county, county plans or county departments, as well as then an opening for percentage of that to go to community, which will be like a grant or a application process for nonprofits or other entities to apply for some of those funds to go towards projects that kind of go towards either the strategic plan or the opioid task force strategic plan. We resolved the BPW, got that down from, because of the statute that when you get more population, you get less representation apparently. So we've gone from 11 to nine on the BPW. I was unfortunately absent last week for those votes, so I apologize, but I did get some notes, did watch the meeting. The MSU extension may have found their new home at the Ida Topkins Building. They did supply a, they are provide, they did, we did, the board approved a letter of intent to the landlord, so we will see if that will go forward. Currently, it's the least expensive of other locations for them to move to, but I know there's discussions about the basement of the county, of the government building downtown, so that might be open for discussion. And finally, we appointed interview and ad hoc committee to interview candidates for openings on committees throughout the county. Beta, you can join me on Economic Development Corporation. That's always real interesting and fun. It's great. The hospital finance, the building code appeals, DHHS, and you can join Supervisor McManus on the BTPW. And that is what I have this evening. Any questions? Molly, you snuck in. I didn't see you sneak in.
I did.
All right, you know how to reach me. Have a great one.
Thank you, you too.
All right, next up, Grand Traverse County Road Commissioner.
Good evening, Dan Watkins. Just gonna go over some of the things we're working on currently. We did our crack sealing, already completed that so far this year. Right now, we're right in the middle of doing our chip seal project. We're doing about 70 miles of chip seal this year. We just released a video actually today talking about that process a little bit. It's on our website, anybody's curious. Longline painting, that's continuing. Right now, we're doing back truck. We just rented a back truck. We rent a back truck every year for a month. Those trucks are about $800,000. We can rent one for $10,000 and do everything we need to do in a month's time. So by the time you purchase one and the maintenance and upkeep, it just makes no sense to own one of those. Also getting ready to start doing sweeping now that we are part of the MPO and MS4 required to sweep twice a year before we only swept once a year. So that's something that changed. So we are a little bit ahead that we're already sweeping once a year and we're already running the backs every year that we were doing all of our manhole covers and storm drains. So we're not too much, we just had to add one more sweeping to the process. Roadside mowing, that has been an absolute disaster for us this year. So normally, we run three mowing tractors. By this time of year, we've already went all the way through the county. We're getting ready to do our second round. We're only about halfway through the county. We've had transmission issues. We've lost every tire on every tractor. We've had engine issues. We've wadded up mowers. We've found rims. We've found tires. We've found cables that have wrapped up inside our mowers. It has just been horrible. Right now, we actually have only one running tractor. We've looked everywhere to try to rent one. There's a company Burnhamstone Grand Rapids found us one in Kentucky. So we had the tractor bought up from Kentucky. It made a week and it died. We are just not having any luck with mowing this year, so we apologize if you're getting any complaints or calls about mowing. We're trying to get some tractors back together. So, a couple other updates. Our old Kingsley building sold, so it was bought by a local company there in the village, so it's nice to see that stay local. We're planning on putting that money right back into the road system. A couple of things we have going right now is we did a bid to do a countywide car count. We've never done this before. We actually had all of our roads have car counts on them. Some of them, we tried to look up data and it's back into the 90s. And I think we really need a new idea of where we are at, you know, countywide, of where our traffic's flowing, where's it coming from? What's coming in from other counties that's coming into Grand Traverse County and taxing our road system? We're gonna take a look at that. So, and it's gonna be nice to do the exact same time, every single road in the county, we're gonna have a car count. We can take a look at, should a different road be a local, should a different road be a primary, different things like that, and that's gonna help build a plan. We're gonna try to start to build out a five-year plan of our roads, what direction we're going. So we're pretty excited about that. The other thing I mentioned a little bit there was that MS4. So we did have to contract with OHM and they're gonna do a plan for us. Let's do the end of August. So we are on track to hit our MS4 requirements. We're gonna talk a little bit about some of the actual road projects we have going on. I know I have Commissioner Lehman here tonight. He wanted to talk a little bit about some of the road projects we have going on. So Potter Road, got that one done. That was a really good project. We saw some of the best pricing we have seen in a long time come on that project. Came in under budget, so we were really happy with that one. And though that was that one just out of nowhere, if you, that's also when we have a video on there and you can see pictures of it in the fall and then the winter and the spring, it's just crazy what happened to that road. But it was nice. We get that road taken care of and get that back open. Town Line Road, that's another one. Right now, because we're doing Three Mile, we have that road closed. We were hoping people weren't gonna use it, but there it is now like crazy and it's really taking a lot of wear. We do have that planned to do a wedge and a chip seal sometime in August, about the time we're finishing up Three Mile. It's not gonna be a perfect road. It's not gonna be a brand new road. We're gonna try to get it glued back together a little bit and by ourselves a few years to get a long-term plan going there. But something will be happening with Town Line. It should look a little better than it does now. So I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Lehman.
Dan gave you most of the highlights of the regular maintenance and what they're doing at the road commission, like the mowing things. I didn't even know that the tractors are broke down. So I just have two things. I wanted to thank you for your involvement in Barney Road. We have taken bids. The bids are gonna be acceptable. There's some fine tuning to be done and I hope we can proceed with that this fall. Your comments on roads that you think you could always send in, we are, Thursday night, we have, we do have Dan talk a little bit about a five-year plan. We have taken bids for an engineering company to develop a in-depth five-year plan and we're gonna prove, I believe we're gonna prove one of the bidders after we reviewed it Thursday night. The only concern we have about the five-year plan is people are gonna, they are gonna start naming the roads from top to bottom. But things change. Potter Road, we blew up on us. It's, it's not gonna be a, it's gonna be a suggestion and a path for us to move forward with the caveat of emergencies and changes might come about us and we have to be prepared to deal with that, but we at least are gonna have a long-term plan. We just got done doing Lake Shore Drive wedging and chip sealing it down in Fife Lake. And Lake Shore Drive was promised by a committee that promoted the first millage to us over 10 years ago to county residents. And it was supposed to be in that first batch and somehow it never got done. So we've tried, in the last 18 months or so, we've tried to go back and say, what promises did the road commission make? And we're gonna keep those before we move forward. And that's another example of a good manager, diligent staff. We're gonna take care of some of the old details, you know. As a board member, I feel like the previous board, they might not have voted how I voted, but that's what they voted for and we should continue to support what they did. And so now we've taken, we've taken care of that also. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Quick question. Happened to be down in the south part of the county, Miller and Bot Road down there, what did you do to those? What do you call that process you did to those? Is that a wedge and whatever you called it?
Yeah, so Miller Road, I think, was repaved within the last year or two. So we did a chip seal over top of that.
Okay.
And then was it Herring Road right next to that?
I think we're all done right there.
Yeah, that was, that's the wedge. That's what we consider a wedge there. So trying to get that crown back in the road so we can get the water to run off it.
I mean, they were like brand new roads. They were beautiful. I was just gonna say they were, they, they're smooth. They were nice. They were, you know, whatever you did was the right thing to do for, those aren't really heavily traveled roads, but trying to put a face to a name, so to speak, the wedge and whatever you call it there, wedge and seal or whatever you call it. Now, what did you do to Potter? Totally reconstruct that?
Potter was so far gone, yeah, we call that a full crush in shape. So before, there was a lot of, when they did a road, they were just doing crushing shapes. We're trying to identify some of those roads that we can save before they get to that million dollars a mile with these wedges. The unfortunate part is the more car count you have, the less you can do those kind of fixes. Under 1,000 cars, we can kind of get away with some of these things a day. When we start getting over 1,000 cars, that's where you gotta do more of the heavier maintenance repairs and the crushing shapes.
I'll be curious now that Potter's fixed and you're doing car counts, what, you know, with the roundabout and with the crosstown traffic using that, I'd really be curious what the count's on that now that it's fixed.
I have a feeling it's gonna be, it's gonna be up there.
Yeah.
This fall, yeah.
This fall, we should have all these car counts.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, it's gonna be, I'm glad you're doing the car counts after it was fixed and not before, because it would not show up.
Joe, you and I certainly did not want to drive that before.
Oh, I, I drove it once and I said, I'm not going back out there. Thank you.
And you might, you might, when, when Town Line is done, you might take a drive on it and say, that's pretty acceptable, or no, I don't think the road commission could be doing this. When we're doing the, this, the maintenance on this or something other than full reconstruction, we're not able to widen it out or put a shoulder or anything on it. We're really only overlaying the old surface. And so the older roads, when we try to do this, those are narrow lanes. So you're not gonna get the feeling of something with a shoulder, but about, what did we say, one, one-fifth the price per mile of a crushing shape. And that's on the low-volume roads, that's the kind of stuff we're looking at. But it's about one-fifth, is that right, 300?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, so it's a, it's not a new road, like Dan said, but it is probably acceptable to most people.
Deal. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a great night.
All right, next up, MMR.
Good evening. I know I'm a new, a new face for you guys, but my name is Dan Marsholder. I'm the operations manager for Manistee and Cadillac for MMR. For those who don't know, Amy is no longer with us as of July 11th, so she went on to another opportunity, which we wish her the best in that. Just a little background, this division, which is our Northwest Operations, it covers five counties, Manistee, Wexford, Antrim, Grand Traverse, and Crawford. So there's always been two managers. I've been in my position for a couple of years now, so Amy and I have worked really close together. I live over in Lake Anne, so I'm pretty familiar with Traverse City and the operations here. So not too much craziness for me taking over in the interim. They did do interviews and they will be filling that position shortly. I'm guessing probably late August, so probably the new person you guys will see in September for this area. So you'll be stuck with me next month, too, and I'll probably be back in September, too, but as far as how things are going up here, I just kind of stepped into this Traverse City role last week, so I will be centrally located here just to be central for all of our areas. This is obviously our busier area, but from what I've gathered, we're still kind of settling into the new location on Park Drive. Things are going well there. A lot of still just making it ours. It's, we did a lot of remodeling there, as I'm sure you guys know. Our fiscal year just started July 1st, so we have another phase of work that's gonna happen there. Pretty much the interior's done, but a lot of the Phase Two stuff is gonna be the outside landscaping, making it look nice, beautification, I guess we'll call it. I'm excited for that because I do have a little bit of OCD and it needs some work on the outside. Education-wise, our paramedic class is still going strong. That ends this winter. Still have 11 students in that. And we just did interviews yesterday for an upcoming EMT class that starts August 2nd. We did 16 interviews yesterday for that. Only nine of them will be accepted, so we wish everybody the best of luck in that round. As far as that, I don't know that we have any education plan for '26 quite yet. I'm sure we will, but I'm not sure what it looks like at this time. The stats that were provided, I will apologize, those are not correct. I was looking at them earlier today and the run numbers are not where they should be. And it looks like the response times were cut off. So I reached out to our data guy. He's gonna get those rectified. Just wasn't able to today. And I can email out to you guys, see if the correct ones are front of you. Other than that, I don't think I have much more for you guys unless you have something for me.
Any questions for Dan?
All right, I will hand some cards off to Chris here to pass down for you guys. If you need to get ahold of me, feel free to contact me. My cell phone's on here as well.
All right. Thank you. Engineering report, construction update.
Thank you. I believe it was probably handed out at your desk because I was late. Don't hold it against me. I'll try better next time. But on your desk, same format as normal, July 17th date, a few specific project highlights. The McCray PRV that we have coined and worked through this probably three, four years ago, and I've made mention. We had put the project out for bid in a location that works within public right of way, although not ideal. And sometimes things happen for good reasons and because bid prices came in high, we tabled that project. DPW had more emphasis and priority that they requested of this board to act on Stone Ridge PRV, which we completed along with Cedar Run PRV. In that delay, the Gothier, Gothier property, depending on who you ask and how you pronounce it, we had been working with that developer and through that process acknowledged that that property prevented a much better location for PRV. And they finally, the project came to fruition. They've been working with funding, other funding sources and still interested and available to give us an easement for this PRV. And I worked with their site design engineer explaining to them the impacts. It's gonna help them with improvements because the facilities they're proposing are residential, two to three stories. And as we go up, pressures can go down and explaining the parameters and they have some property available on the upper corner that falls within a setback. So it's not necessarily usable to them and they continue to be amenable to wanting to provide a sneezement. So being very thankful for that and a good partner, we just got their site plans. They're working on escrow and actually just released their CAD files to us so that we can work on placing that PRV in that new location. So I'm very excited. Sometimes delays work out very well. And so I'm very excited for you guys to have access to this opportunity and will help not only them, but Cracker Barrel, you know, the other developments south. And I know Metro Fire will be very happy to see this happen as well because that area's been a pocket of low pressure. So that is on my fast track because of their timelines and delays with the equipment delivery that we're gonna expedite working on our site plan to include the PRV, get that out for bid, because my goal is to have that in the ground before they start working. So I'll continue to work with staff on that. Master meters have all been in, functional and working as of mid-May. And so I've had opportunity to meet with our new DPW director, Kent Carburg. There's been a couple of meetings with city just to make sure everybody's reading the same meter data and it's getting shared. There is a couple of little hiccups as far as the units that are being measured. DPW's seeing it translate in GPMs and I think the city may be seeing it in cubic feet, which I think Mr. McManus Supervisor said in that meeting and city was seeing readings of usage of 29 million gallons a day, which we know to not be accurate because the plant can't even produce that, so.
The decimal was just off by one.
Couple, yeah. So little red flags for all of us that we could all joke about. So they're working through that. Mr. Carburg is also working with the meter manufacturer to ensure that everything's calibrated and sequencing well and everybody's getting the same data. So again, that's actually a good project to see move ahead and eliminate past interpretations. Hydrant ordinance, thank you, Clerk McManus, for passing along the ordinance. So I've been working with DPW on that one with our orphaned hydrants that are private, working on asset inventory, coming up with the operating plan for DPW and inspection protocol, what we want to do with those. There is roughly 70 in the system that we have to target and address. And so it created more work. It'll be good when everything's said and done. Pump station six, we, township manager, myself, new DPW director, had opportunity to meet with Blair Township just to discuss operations. As some of you know or may not know that are new in this board, that Blair Township discharges their sanitary sewer flows into one of our pump stations. I actually probably saw it through the tours, that one at the low hill next to Applebee's. That's dangerously not accessible. But through that, the township has a multi-user agreement. Blair Township's significantly growing, contributing a lot more sewage. That station is running overtime and overneed of an overhaul and upgrade. And so had that great meeting with them. They acknowledged their participation. So not too far, you guys will see in front of you a contract for us to upgrade that station and accommodate for their future flows, your future flows. And then we'll go from there, but you have a good partner with Blair.
Can I share, excuse me?
Yes, yep, all in that, it's all outlined in that multi-user, absolutely. That was why it was important to get their understanding and buy-in, so, great question. And continuing to keep supervisor and manager aware, and some of you have seen notes of this and just tracking, the city is going through significant upgrades for the wastewater plant. I, when we met with the capital improvement committee recently, I was able to share the updated amortization schedule so that, and you guys can just have that as part of your budgeting process, too, because that's gonna translate to a significant cost that the city has already committed and executed those bonds. And Garfield being part of the regional facility has a percentage of contribution. And despite it being a very low interest rate, it does translate to a very high cost for the next 20 years. And making sure that that is reflected in your water, or not water, but your sewer rates that you guys had approved a couple of years ago. So that's being reviewed and evaluated. Onto fun stuff, the parks. I am happy to report River East, we got an audience with the health department out on site and the soils were good for the new drain field location. So I'm glad I can share that with you guys. We got that confirmation on Friday, I think. So that helped me finalize and forge ahead with the design. So that's pretty close to being complete and, as I told you guys, fast-tracking it with the new revisions of the parking lot, bathroom relocation, things of that nature, that I want to have it wrapped up the end of this month. So some staff are probably not very happy with me, but I am glad that the soils proved very, very well for us because that was a concern. Copper Ridge Trailhead, we have, we're working on closeout. We have had a couple of washout events that we've been monitoring. Molon's been great about coming back out on site and doing restoration and that's part of their one-year guarantee. The Commons Trail, as you guys are aware, we put that in for eagle permitting because of the wetland impact. We did get some eagle comments back that they want addressed. We just got those and been communicating with Steve Hannan in planning as far as what those were, just to update some plans. Once, it's our understanding, once the plan's been updated, then they're finally gonna host the public comment period for 20 days. So it's very slow, so we're trying to be very responsive so that we So it's very slow, so we're trying to be very responsive so that we can try to get the permit and get it out for bid this fall. I know Planning Department would like to see that, too. Barlow Sidewalk will be on your agenda for next board meeting for closeout. Been getting a lot of good feedback from the public, so I hope you guys are too. We did have someone drive through the wet concrete when it was first place, that was kind of sad, but it got replaced with a bike. But no, overall, Elmer's did a great job, in and out, and again, we're seeing a lot of high visibility and usage, and I think TC Overheard has definitely been recognized, and there's been some kudos to the township for putting in that trail there. Let's see, some site plan reviews, and now, yeah, some more stormwater reviews are starting to trickle in. Otherwise, I've probably talked enough. I will, any questions this board has for me?
Any questions for Jennifer? All right? I don't think so.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Township manager?
Just a couple infrastructure updates, and just a tale of her comments about the sidewalk. Lot of positive comments. People appreciated, you know, Overheard Traverse City wanted to say how excited my family and I were to see a sidewalk added to the part of South Airport. We can now more easily reach the Boardman Loop, thanks from the Franger Hill. So, you know, looking at our Facebook page and our posts, all positive. Every time you drive by there, people are using it, so it really played out as we wanted it to, so kudos to the board. I got an email from MDOT about our mast arms for load and mires. Due to sourcing items, it's going to be a little bit later for install. I think they expect that it'll be done right about now, but it's going to be pushed back to November. They still believe it's going to be done this year, so that should not be an issue. And then, a week ago, Friday night into Saturday, when we had that heavy rainstorm, many homes in the Ravenhurst sub, south of the high school and Heritage Estates, suffered sewer backups. So there's a sewer line that runs between Northlong, south through Ravenhurst, through Heritage Estates, and then east to the east side of the sub, and roughly 10 to a dozen homes had backups, including mine. They're 26 years and never had to deal with something like that, and I never want to do it again. So a lot of people woke up to flooded basements, and, you know, if you drove around over that week, you would see restoration companies in everybody's driveways cleaning up the mess. So at this point, the DPW is investigating the cause, and currently, all the homeowners are responsible for the repairs, you know, and through our insurance. Unless there is a cause determined with the system or somebody else caused this to happen, the homeowners would be responsible. I did get information that some of the homeowners received letters from the county's risk management company about them receiving a claim from the homeowners, and they acknowledge it, and they're wanting to work with homeowners to resolve this. So that was very positive. But I think at this point, we're just waiting to do the investigation or the DPW and see what happened. So unfortunate, I've been there 26 years and never, you know, had dealt with that, so. That's all I have for my report, and got a lot of other things on the agenda to talk about.
All right, thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? All right. Supervisor's report, just a couple of things. As was mentioned earlier, the DPW did vote, as we've been wanting to get the BPW board from 11 down to 9, which is great news. However, they failed to appoint our rural rep that we had requested, and there's some confusion with the county board on what a rural rep, the definition of a rural rep. So it's pretty clear to us, and they're stating basically that the rural townships are not customers of the BPW, but ordinance, they're required to use the septic plant county-wide, so they're all customers of BPW. So we have the BPW council and the county council trying to work that out. So, great job on going down to 9, getting us back in business, however, we're still a little bit at odds on what a rural rep is, definitely some confusion there. At Metro Fire, today, we approved the budget, so probably next meeting, you'll be seeing the 2026 Metro budget coming to us for approval. So good, smooth budgeting process this year with Metro, and that'll be coming to you. Had a meeting today with the new city manager, I guess, down in Traverse City today, and we haven't sat down across the table from the city in a while, as we've been working through our water, worked through a lot of the water things, but with the easement with the commons. So there's basically two options on the table. We're moving forward with, you know, weighing both those out, what the two options are on the commons connection, and we're committed to getting that taken care of, so. And we're also optimistic, you know, they've already set out, we've said we need to have, you know, regular scheduled meetings with the city and start working through the water planning, you know, long-term planning, and they've already sent out a suggested, basically every two weeks, meeting with them and talking through water. So it's kind of been quiet. I know the city's been busy over the last few months, they've had a lot of things on their plate, so I think that's maybe settling down a little bit, but we'll be working through some water questions and a couple options on the easement, and we'll probably bring something to you in the near future. So that's all I have. Any questions? All right. We'll move on to nothing under unfinished business, new business. Item A is a public hearing, consideration of Scusell Property A1 Agricultural Res zoning Resolution 2025-16-T. That's on page 64 of your PACA. John, do you want to talk about it all before we open up the public hearing?
Good evening, John Sykes, Planning Director. Just do a brief introduction, but consideration here is for rezoning two parcels on Hammond Road. 306 West Hammond Road is currently zoned, conditionally zoned, general commercial, and the owners are making a request to rezone that to agriculture. They also own the adjacent property, it's a larger property, 478 West Hammond Road is currently zoned, conditionally zoned agriculture, and they're requesting to rezone that to A agricultural. So these are essentially downzoning. They're reducing the density or intensiveness of the potential uses on there. They're looking to preserve the property, so ultimately, they have a conservation easement on that property that will prohibit from land use development. So that's what's being considered. There's, if the board does choose to take action, there, on page eight of our report, there's three recommended actions.
All right, thank you, John. Well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would wish to come forward and discuss the Resolution 2025-16-T, the rezoning, please come forward and let us know what you have to say. Doesn't look like anybody's here to discuss this one, so we'll go ahead and close public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Do you need a motion, a stand motion?
Make a motion that the Planning Commission's recommendation finding in facts for the application of Z 2024-01, as provided in PD Report 2025-68, informing part of the motion, of this motion be approved.
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the findings of fact under PD Report 2025-68. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I need a roll on that, do I?
Pardon me?
It's a resolution.
Yeah, you need one.
Okay, sorry. Ann, can you take a roll on that, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Cumber?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, sorry about that. All right.
I make a motion that application Z 2024-01 submitted by Chris and Anita Scusell to rezone parcel 0524-020-00, 306 West Hammond Road, from its current conditional zoning of C-G, general commercial, to A agricultural zoning district without restrictions, and parcel 05-024-019-20, 478 West Hammond Road, from its current conditional zoning of A agricultural, to the A agricultural zoning district without restrictions, and constituting amendment number 42 to Garfield Township Ordinance number 68, be approved based on the adopted defining in facts, and for the reasons set forth in the PD Report 2025-68, subject to the following conditions, removal of, number one, removal of conditional A agricultural zoning on parcel 05-024-019-20, and two, removal of conditional C-G, general commercial zoning to parcel, on parcel number 05-024-020-00.
All right.
Support.
Okay, motion made and supported to approve the application Z-2024-01, as read. I'm not going to read back through that, so. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done. Ann, go ahead and take a roll, just to be safe.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes.
Yes. I think that's it. All right, I guess that's that one. All right, moving on to B, public hearing, consideration of proposed zoning ordinance amendments on substantial construction definition and lighting, Resolution 2025-17-T.
This is just an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It does establish that definition for substantial construction in the ordinance. It also aligns some of the period of effect for site plans, special use permits, and planned developments. And then there was some changes to the lighting ordinance. It's got some important clarifications on what full cutoff fixtures are. It also requires lighting plans, which we currently do, but it just actually specifies that in the ordinance. Also, there addresses some challenges that we've been dealing with, some of the lighting that we've experienced, particularly with the advancements of LED lighting, particularly for accent lighting on buildings that use LED, and then also where we have some buildings where the interior lighting is emitting to the outdoors. So those are the things that will be, will not be permitted within the township.
Thank you, John. All right, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for consideration of Resolution 2025-17-T. Anybody like to come forward and speak to this? Nobody's here to talk about construction and lighting, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Your recommendations on page three of that report.
I can't find it.
I'm looking too.
I can't find it.
It's page 111 of your PACA, if you're looking for it.
111?
111.
Joe, I can speak a little bit to the construction, new definitions for construction. We had some problems when we did the beta, and so we, the Planning Commission felt that we needed to be more specific on what it means to be under construction, those kinds of things, so we kind of worked on it.
I make a motion that Resolution 20-25-17-T to adopt amendment number 43 to the Garfield Township Ordinance, number 68, Garfield Township zoning ordinance be adopted.
I'll second that.
Motion made and supported to that we approve Resolution 2025-17-T. Any further discussion on that motion? I agree with Molly, this is something we've been looking, glad to see you come forward. We want to, you know, you can't be detailed enough and specific enough, so thank you. Ann, can we have a roll on that, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion that Resolution 20-25-16-T to adopt amendment number 42 to the Garfield Township Ordinance, number 68, to rezone parcel 05-024-020-00, 306 West Hammond Road, from its current conditional zoning of C-G, general commercial, to the A agricultural zoning district without restrictions, and parcel 05-024-019-20, 478 West Hammond Road, from its current conditional zoning of A agricultural, to the A agricultural zoning district without restrictions, be adopted, subject to the following conditions, one, removal of the conditional A agricultural zoning for parcel number 05-024-01-20, and two, removal of the conditional G, excuse me, C-G, general commercial zoning parcel number 05-024-020-00.
Support.
All right. Motion suspended and supported to approve Resolution, adopt Resolution 2025-16-T. Any further discussion on that motion? Ann, can you roll call that one, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Is that Lap?
It was, yes.
Okay. L. McManus?
Yes.
Cumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes.
Boom. Yes. I think that's it. All right, I guess that's that one. All right, moving on to B, public hearing, consideration of proposed zoning ordinance amendments on substantial construction definition and lighting, Resolution 2025-17-T.
This is just an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It does establish that definition for substantial construction in the ordinance. It also aligns some of the period of effect for site plans, special use permits, and planned developments. And then there was some changes to the lighting ordinance. It's got some important clarifications on what full cutoff fixtures are. It also requires lighting plans, which we currently do, but it just actually specifies that in the ordinance. Also, there addresses some challenges that we've been dealing with, some of the lighting that we've experienced, particularly with the advancements of LED lighting, particularly for accent lighting on buildings that use LED, and then also where we have some buildings where the interior lighting is emitting to the outdoors. So those are the things that will be, will not be permitted within the township.
Thank you, John. All right, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for consideration of Resolution 2025-17-T. Anybody like to come forward and speak to this? Nobody's here to talk about construction and lighting, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Your recommendations on page three of that report.
I can't find it.
I'm looking too.
I can't find it.
It's page 111 of your PACA, if you're looking for it.
111?
111.
Joe, I can speak a little bit to the construction, new definitions for construction. We had some problems when we did the beta, and so we, the Planning Commission felt that we needed to be more specific on what it means to be under construction, those kinds of things, so we kind of worked on it.
I make a motion that Resolution 20-25-17-T to adopt amendment number 43 to the Garfield Township Ordinance, number 68, Garfield Township zoning ordinance be adopted.
I'll second that.
Motion made and supported to that we approve Resolution 2025-17-T. Any further discussion on that motion? I agree with Molly, this is something we've been looking, glad to see you come forward. We want to, you know, you can't be detailed enough and specific enough, so thank you. Ann, can we have a roll on that, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Acustinelli?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right. So moving on, item C, presentation on South Airport Road corridor plan concept.
part of some of the non-motorized connections that we have, with the most recent one being the Boardman Lake Loop. So this was a corridor that certainly raises to the top of something that's important, not for just Garfield Township, but also for the region as a whole, and certainly in recognizing that with the, kind of the pause of the Hartman Hammond Bridge and that connection really places even more emphasis on this corridor, and I think in terms of the transportation aspect of it, that's one part, but there's also the land use, which is also an important part of that particular corridor, and I think that's where if there's an opportunity here to, basically a partnership between the township, not just this township, but also East Bay Township, and the road commission to see about advancing and making improvements, I don't think we're going to solve some of the issues there in terms of capacities, but we certainly can alleviate it, and also to help the businesses and property owners that are along that corridor. Back before, when we were doing the master plan, which was completed in twenty-four, there was a community survey that was done, a random sample of residents within Garfield Township, and there was a couple of statements where we had pretty strong support from the residents, particularly in the case of redeveloping some of our outdated areas such as what's, you see the transformation with the Charleyan Center and so forth, and there was eighty-seven agreed or strongly agreed to that statement, there's also support, seventy-six agree or strongly agree to the idea of improving our commercial corridors through things such as limiting signs, building sidewalks, reducing driveways, some of that can be done through site plan review process, and the planning commission has been working a lot in terms of addressing a lot of those issues through that process. The master plan specifically talks about improving the corridors in some, its goals and some of its objectives. So what I've kind of presenting here, and this is just for your idea, for your conversation and see what your thoughts are on whether to proceed with this or not, but since it's a very large corridor, it's got a lot of parts to it, that it's really beyond the scope of just even the road commission and the township, that there are other parties, other stakeholders, as I mentioned, like business owners, property owners, but there are other people that are invested in, in that particular corridor, so before going through any type of a planning process, it's just to have, start off with some initial discussions and investigation, and to see kind of the status of, of that particular corridor, and what, you know, what can transpire from that, what can move forward before we actually get into a formal planning process, it may become through that investigation that we decide to pause for one reason or another, or take a different route, or we decide to proceed, but at least gives us a sense of what's happening on the corridor before we dive into it. So the, kind of that first phase is, is having discussions, having meetings with stakeholders, we thought, one area that would be really worthwhile to focus is on Logan's Landing, there's, certainly there's a lot of stakeholders, there's the developers and owners of property in there, we have, we know that there's interest in the redevelopment of Logan's Landing, there's also, the county has a park there, there's, the township is a kind of stakeholder in that as well with the Boardman Valley Nature Preserve, and so it might be an opportunity to kind of talk about that area in terms of what improvements could be done to that before we kind of look at the broader corridor, it allows for those conversations to happen by those stakeholders, and to see what improvements need to be happening there before looking beyond that. One of the things that when we were just looking back over the years, there was the east-west corridor study, which was completed by the road commission back in twenty nineteen, and one of the recommendations, actually one of the first recommendations out there was to do an access management plan for South Airport Road, and certainly the road commission is a key piece to that, but the township through its planning and land use zoning is an important part of that too, because while they focus on things within the right-of-way, the way the zoning and the, and the planning kind of focuses on things on, that run adjacent to that right-of-way. So through these discussions, investigations, if it makes sense to move forward, we clearly define a scope of the process, what the objectives of the process would be, timeline and so forth, and then come back to the planning commission and ultimately the township board before we would proceed and go down that path, should that happen. If that were to happen, the process would start initially by three components, there would be community engagement, that would be with property owners, business owners and so forth, it would also look at other partnerships that would be helpful in advancing that, we would do assessment work, which is basically data collection and information collection, looking at land use, transportation, the economic condition of that corridor, and from that whole process, start to develop some conceptual designs, what kind of changes, what kind of tweaks could happen to that corridor, not just from a, a road standpoint, but also looking at how that land uses and the businesses there and so forth, how they interface with that transportation corridor. So from those conceptual ideas, you come and work towards an actual preferred conceptual design and start getting into an actual development plan. That, the plan would include future land use, so we would revisit some of the land use along there, access management, as is mentioned in that east-west corridor study, I think is a critical piece, that an access management component in a, in a plan would help both the planning commission and the road commission make some alterations that improve the flow of traffic through that area through driveway redesign, parking lot redesign, certainly there's always opportunity for creating new connections, whether it's vehicles or non-motorized components like pedestrians and bicyclists, water sewer and stormwater improvements, can see what's needed, I know in talking with Jennifer, there's, we have a, a water main crossing there at the Boardman River currently, that needs to be upsized, if there were any improvements made at Logan's Landing, that would be an opportune time for us to also upgrade the municipal water system there. And then also looking at some of the design upgrades that can happen along that, certainly we've seen a lot of investment being made in terms of sidewalks, trails, landscaping and so forth. And this is, may not be easy to read on the screen, but I know it's in your packet, this is, when I talk about access management plan, this is a, a sample of an area in, in Petoskey, so this is not our area at all, but the important thing is to say, is it shows out different changes that would be happening along the roadway corridors, so those yellow call-out boxes would basically say, in this area, we would like to see some driveway consolidation or relocation, we'd like to, in this case, they were actually relocated a, a street to a different location, just tweaks in the driveways, connections to parking lots and those types of things. So what that does is it provides a guidebook or, or guide plan for the planning commission, so when we're reviewing site plans, that we can actually reference this document that shows, yes, there's an interest in trying to change some of this configuration. The access points between the land uses and the transportation system, in this case, the South Airport Road, are really important, because the spacing of those really impact the way that people access properties, and if we can remove a lot of the conflicts, it tends to allow for traffic to flow, it also allows for people to get in and out of those businesses a lot easier than they can right now. So this is just an example, we actually had a little bit of a access management project happen with the Shell Station at the corner of La Frania and South Airport, so the above pictures are what it used to look like, if you look at the South Airport ones, you can see actually two driveways and an island there with the power pole in the middle of that, and then if you look to the bottom, the one driveway was closed, the other one stayed in place, and where the power pole is at, you can kind of see there's the island still there, so it eliminated the driveway closest to the intersection. The other one is on La Frania Road on the east, excuse me, west side of that property, where it was consolidated two driveways down into one driveway, so that helps to eliminate some of the conflicts that could have in terms of turning movements. From the development plan, then there's the, the process of going through and actually implementing, and zoning is one of those things that we can do, as I mentioned, through development reviews and so forth, there's transportation improvements, which are always being made, and whether it's signalization, or, you know, altering lanes or pavement and so forth, but I think one of the challenges that we've often dealt with, and I know there's always a challenge with the road commission in terms of dealing with a lot of these projects, is what type of funding sources are available, and we, working tandem together, we can look at things like grants and so forth, and different funding mechanisms to help support those, but I think one of the key pieces that would potentially happen is establishment of a corridor improvement authority, and this would be a, an excellent mechanism to provide public financing of some of these improvements to those driveways, whether it's consolidation or some of those parking lot configurations, it helps to leverage other dollars, so can bring in, it provides local matches for some of those projects, so that if we access whether it's state or federal funding or other resources. The corridor improvement authority is a tax increment financing authority, so it would be capturing the incremental value of the investment made back in, in, made in that corridor, and bring it back to that corridor to allow for those improvements to occur. So there's a lot of, I think, opportunity to, you know, go forward with something like that, not to say that would be essentially established, but recognizing how important this corridor is not, you know, not just for Garfield, but also for the region, it's an economic corridor, so it's similar, no different than a downtown, it's just in a long linear fashion, so it really has opportunity for improvement and to kind of deal with some of the, the challenges that we're currently facing. Again, I, I don't think that this is something that is going to resolve all the issues, but it would certainly help improve, also this is something that would be taking time to transform, this isn't something that's going to happen in a, in a year or two or three years, this is more, you know, five, ten, fifteen years. In terms of an actual planning process, we feel that we have the capacity within, at least on the, the land use planning side, to actually facilitate the process through, through the planning department, similar to what we did with the, the land use plan, the master plan, we would also be partnering with the road commission, obviously they would provide the technical expertise related to the roadway itself, particularly providing engineering and design and, and what works best for that roadway corridor, so I think it, it lends itself to be a, a very strong partnership to deal with this corridor in our community. So that's all I have in terms of kind of the concept, if you have any questions or comments.
I have, I don't know if this is true, isn't that true that part of Logan's Landing is now for sale? I just thought I saw it the other day.
I believe the east side has been listed in the past.
For like seven, eight years now?
Okay, because I just saw something in the paper, or somewhere online, that there was advertised again, so I hadn't seen it in so long, I didn't know if it was a new listing or not.
There's a relatively new owner on the west side, who's, who's expressed to us interest in purchasing that east side.
We just approved a project for him on the other side of the river.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for John?
So John, what's the next action? Like this is conceptual, but what's?
The, the next would be for us as staff to kind of having some conversations, we would probably look maybe at Logan's Landing as a project, I know that the road commission is interested in proving that, particularly with there's those culverts there, they've looked at options and, for a bridge and so forth, you know, working with them along with the other property owners and stakeholders that are along there.
So I'm hearing a lot of this is dependent on what happens at Logan's Landing.
Well, we thought that instead of trying to do everything all at once, that would give us a good opportunity to kind of do a, a test piece, just because of the importance of that river crossing, should those culverts fail or have any problem with that, it could be, you know, extremely disastrous for the, the community as a whole, so that's, we thought that would be a good, like, test case to kind of start the conversation, and if from there, if that works, then we would see about expanding the scope of it, come back and provide an actual scope of work, along with timeline and so forth, and then at that point, you could decide whether you want to proceed, so this would be just more, just kind of getting the blessing to kind of have these conversations.
Okay.
I like the idea, I like the fact that you can use tax increment financing, because not every business in Garfield wants to pay for the improvement of another area, so that, that makes sense. The people who are covering the, are paying the additional taxes are getting extra value, so it's a no-lose situation. Yeah, I have some, some doubts about Logan's Landing being the linchpin, but there's, we can go over that.
I think one of the reasons that we were talking there is because we know if there's change in ownership there, there could be change in land use there, so we were just trying to get ahead of the, of that, but should that happen, if there were some major changes there, then at least we're communicating and coordinating, so that's kind of why we were thought, processed there.
I like it.
You too.
Is East Bay taking the same approach that, I know they're, they're doing a corridor study out on the Parkway with all the Miracle Mile out there, is it similar to the process they're going through then?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the difference there, I think that was a, a little bit larger project from the standpoint of its scope, you know, they were looking at kind of branding the corridor and all that stuff, I think we're just looking at, you know, making some improvements and so forth, the other thing too is, I know they relied on consultants and so forth, and I think we have the capacity here, you know, to, to do this in-house, so I think that's a little bit different, but similar focus of what the results, trying to work towards.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. All right, next study, item D, I think our township manager has a assessor position he'd like to talk to us about.
So recently we had somebody within our assessing department submit their resignation, so that was an appraiser two position that we no longer have, so we have an appraiser one and our assessor. So at this point, we have an opportunity to potentially restructure how the assessing department looks, but at the end of the day, we have to put another person in there, in the past, before my time here, there used to be four people in that department, three, and I think it's varied over time, you know, Chuck, you could probably speak to that.
It was three, it's been three for quite a while.
Okay. Had an opportunity to speak with the personnel committee about this, and also our assessor, on what that could look like in the future, and we are leaning towards replacing the appraiser with a deputy assessor. So the deputy assessor would, you know, share in management duties in the absence of the assessor, they would be required to be a level three assessor, so they, they come with, you know, significant qualifications, and that person also could in time become a level four assessor, and, and we're looking at this position being a deputy for succession planning, potential succession planning, in the event of the assessor not being here, leaving, you know, we kind of learned that with our former assessor, we had two appraisers in the department for a period of time, if our assessor were to leave, you have somebody, at least in the office, who can manage it and keep it afloat, and when you think about, you know, our assessing department here at Garfield is pretty big and pretty significant what they do. And it also allows for our staff member who's there as appraiser to move forward and go into other positions as well, that person could someday become an, an appraiser or an assessor, level four, but for that individual, that's a five to seven-year process, you know, if the deputy were to move forward into an assessor role, if our current assessor left, a deputy position would open up, so there's room for advancement for our current staff, which is important to myself and the personnel committee, that that opportunity is there for them, and so we have just, completed some just preliminary wage analysis, this wasn't included in our wage study, and what we found is that deputy assessors at a, a, like township Cascade near Grand Rapids, have a range of seventy-one thousand up to ninety-seven thousand for a deputy assessor, and ZipRecruiter reports an average of eighty-four thousand But, you know, what I'm learning in managing the assessing department and the changes that we've had is that you have people who desire to be a four, some would rather be a three, and we may have multiple applications from each person. You know, somebody who wants to move up, somebody who's just happy with a level three, maybe in a deputy position.
But there'd be at least a level three, it'd have to be a level three to be considered.
A level three, that's correct. And our appraiser who left was a level three.
I have a question. You said originally, you said the original range was 71 to 80,000, but now you-
Seventy-one to 97.
Ninety-seven, but you're asking for 75 to 95. Is there a reason why there's a $4,000 increase?
Um, I don't understand your question.
Well, you said that, you looked at the ranges and they were 71 and 97,000.
Oh, you mean to 75?
Correct. Why are you increasing and not starting at 71 and going to 75 is my question.
I don't have a rationale for that. And I, and I guess the rationale, I guess if I had to pick one, is that on average is 84, and locally, they're getting paid mid-eighties. So why, why would you start so low? That's, I guess that was my thought process.
How many deputy assessors are there locally?
Yeah, how many are there?
Um, there, so you have East Bay, you have the peninsula who have level threes. The difference between those is that they're actually running the department. So where ours would have the level four, who is the ultimate overseer, and the level three would support that person and the department operations.
And what are they making as a level three running the department?
They're making 85.
Okay. Not really a reason you can't start it at 71, if you, if that's what the board wants to do.
Well, this is just a range too. It doesn't, I, I, I mean, if we had a great candidate came in and asked for $71,000 a year, we'd jump for joy and say, okay.
One other question, the person that left, what was their range?
So they didn't have a range, but they were making 68.5 after being here roughly seven years.
So that would be an increase in our budget then?
Yes, but they, they had just become a level three within the last three years, Chuck?
Uh, that's correct.
Yeah. That's why they-
Well, no, I'm just, I was just asking what they were making when they left.
Right.
I didn't care when they made the level three, I just asked.
Well, I know, that's why the, the rate, the rate was what it was.
So the, Chris, you envisioned the, the person we're hiring, the deputy, would have more responsibilities than the person that left?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna take the position we had, increase the responsibilities and oversight, that's why we're, we'd be looking to move up from where we were at 68.5, you know, so, I mean, a range, I always view a range as, you know, depends on the person's experience. You know, you may have somebody that you really want come in, they say, well, I, I want 87 or something, we don't know. I think the range depends a lot, where they land up ends a lot on their, on their qualifications at the time they would come in, so, and myself. But I don't have any problem with, with, you know, changing the range, I think it's still gonna be based on the person that comes in, who we might hire. But like, we didn't include this position in the rate study, 'cause we didn't have this position on our staff at the time.
It seems mostly when you, when you advertise a range, people are applying for the high-end.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't disagree with you.
Almost always.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna look at the high-end, for sure.
But if they just became a level three, they have no experience really with it, they're not gonna get that out of the personnel committee, probably.
Yeah, in the past, I've seen language that is reflecting your experience and certifications.
Yeah.
Rather than even though it's, we've set-
I mean, we, we-
We've set numbers that were too low, and then nobody applies.
I think you gotta have-
You normally post, you normally post the range with the posting?
Yeah, typically.
Or could you post, just post it with, you know, ways dependent on experience, or is that not getting you where you want to be?
No, that's not gonna get you anywhere.
Yeah, the standard now is to post the range, or you won't get candidates, 'cause-
Yep.
They wanna know if it's worth applying for.
But you could also post the range and add based on experience too, you could also add that, so they know that, it's not automatically gonna come in at the high end of that range depending on their experience.
Yeah, or add for the DPW director that had a dollar amount, nobody applied. So then when they came back with the competitive based upon your, then we had some applicants.
Okay.
It's, it's a weird market.
So the ask is on the table, what's the, what's the board's pleasure?
One other quick comment.
Yep.
So we did have a job description for an assistant assessor, which in essence is the deputy assessor, so there was some work done in the past for that. I don't know if there was ever a deputy assessor formal position, but I think I'd like any motion to include creating that position.
Okay.
Formally with a job description, which I've already been kind of working on with the one that we have.
Okay, well-
Go ahead, Molly.
I'll make the motion that the committee get together and decide exactly what the job is, look at what was done before, and get it out there. We're gonna need to fill that position, so let's, I'd make the motion that we proceed with it if that's what you want. And you can set the salary range at 71 and go to 85 or 70, 75, it doesn't really matter to me, one way or the other.
The ask is 75 to 95, so you, if you're gonna change the ask, I'd like to have a specific range. He's asking 75 to 95 as the range, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
71 to 95, 71 to, I, what, you know, just be specific.
95 for deputy would be a level three, the highest-paid level three in the area.
Yeah, and, you know, if you-
Second-in-command. Okay, yeah, just-
And in the end of the day, you know, the personnel committee is gonna vet this all out and come back to the board with a recommendation, and if we find that, you know, we, we have a, a very good candidate that is, you know, that we could hire for 75,000, then, then we would come to the board and request that. So I think it's subjective, and we have to work through it. I think you, if you give a broad range, you'll get a greater amount of applicants that we can sift through.
Or you can make it broader by 71 to 97, too.
Yeah.
'Cause if you get somebody that doesn't have that much experience but is a level three, you'd wanna start them at the 71 and not the 75. So what I'm thinking is if you do it lower, you get somebody that's gonna fit in really good, but just only is a level three just started, then you might wanna start them at 71 and reevaluate them in six months to a year, 'cause you might find somebody out there that doesn't have as much experience, but you as a personnel committee feel that they fit. Right.
We really want somebody with experience for the deputy position. I mean, that's just, that's basically-
There's no guarantee you're gonna get that.
I know there's not.
That's what I'm saying, is, I mean, you're not gonna get it. I mean, if you're down to three applicants that none of them, they all only have one year level three, are you gonna want them to pay that $75,000?
You know, I don't think there's an issue unless Lori and your HR experience doing it from 70 to 90.
Well, typically, your salary range is going to be a spread from the midpoint. So whatever we think the average is, we create a spread that's equal on either side.
Which would be 75 to 95, right?
Which-
Eighty-five being the median, you said 75.
So if you could take 85 as the middle, go 15% up, 15% down, and that's your range, that's approximately 75 to 95, but we could get exact on it with a percentage.
You're basing this on assessors of record.
Correct.
As opposed to a second-in-command. So your mid-range is established as the person who signs the role, who is the assessor of record.
Right, and what I understood that to be was mid-eighties.
Which is the deputy is not that person. It is a different role.
Yeah.
'Cause we have to have a level four to sign our records.
Correct.
And we have that now.
Yeah, Cascade was the comparable that had, they're looking for a deputy assessor who would be 71 to 97, I think it was. So that's, and that was a comparable township to ours.
It's quite a bit richer.
Yeah.
Cascade, yeah, a little bit.
Did you say it's quite a bit richer?
Yes.
Cascade Township, Grand Rapids.
So Chuck, are you saying we're low in that 85 as a midpoint?
No, I think that's high.
You think that's high for a deputy assessor?
It would be, as you said, as I said, the midpoint for a assessor, level three assessor, which is most, any township in the area would have a level three assessor except us.
But aren't we looking for a level, isn't that a requirement?
But these level threes are signing the role.
The assessor is the, is the person who is responsible.
We're looking for somebody in between.
Different townships don't need the same levels, so a lot of townships around us only need a level three, so that level three is the person in charge, signing the role. This person's gonna be second-in-command, is what Chuck's trying to say.
One of our board members is a level three.
The way, the way I processed the thought on this was, we have an assessor, we have a letter for level four assessors that charge the department, and we had a level three appraiser that was paid 68,000 roughly. We're looking for somebody in between, somebody that's a, that's a, a management person, that's an assistant to the assessor.
Right.
That's a deputy, so it's gonna be more than what we were paying the appraiser and less than we're paying the assessor. So I, I think, I don't think the 75 to 95 is far off target for what we would need to pay to get a qualified person in that position. So, I mean, if you wanna say 71 to 97, to, that, I don't, I don't care, it's still gonna be based on their experience. But what we need to get, move this forward is a motion to create the position and approve the posting at that range, that's what I'm looking for.
So what is the range? What is the range we wanna set it for?
Set the range.
What, do you think the midpoint would be, Chuck?
I think it would be somewhat lower, but not dramatically, a few thousand dollars. Again, to be a assessor, to sign the role, to be the ultimately responsible person is more than just a, a, an appraiser.
This person's not gonna be able to sign the role because they're-
Correct. We have somebody above them who signs the role.
Yeah, okay.
So would you take the middle to be 80 instead of 85?
Um, I would be more comfortable there, yes.
Yeah, I would be too. So 70 to 90?
Perfect.
Okay, let's do 70 to 90.
All right, I'll make a motion that we create the deputy assessor role, open it for recruiting with a salary range of 70 to 90,000 dollars a year.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion made, supported, to create the position of deputy assessor, and post the position as soon as possible, and set the salary range for the posting at 70 to 90,000 per year, and I might add, you may be, and based on experience to that as well, so. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, do you have a draft motion to go into closed session?
Yes, I would like to.
Just gonna let the, the public know, we're gonna be going into closed session, so we could be a while, I don't know if you wanna stick around. We will be coming back after our closed session for public comments, so.
It might be appropriate to ask if anyone wants to make public comment.
Yeah, that's fine, I will, let's go ahead and do that, let's move item nine up, and I will open public comment. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say to the board at this point?
I'm proud to be a resident of Garfield Township, and I think the planning department that John leads is fantastic. The road commission is super excited about the corridor work that might happen. The plans have been bounced, talked about with your manager and, and us a little bit, and it would, might provide a great way forward, 'cause a lot of the limitations on improvements to South Airport Road are based on the number of access points that we all believe are probably too many, and this is the thing that could lead to a, a safer corridor, business being happier with it, and, and I certainly think that John's forward-thinking plan is really fantastic. Thank you.
Think so.
Thank you.
Any other comment? All right, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment.
I'll make the motion that we go into closed session to discuss legal issues. Support.
With our attorney.
All right, motion made, supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, it's a roll call vote.
And I'm sorry, yeah.
A roll call, I'm sorry, and a roll call on it.
Castanelli?
Yes.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay, Schmuckel?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Corn?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Let this all on.
Yes, no, we're gonna go in the other room.
We're going in here.
Yeah, we're gonna go in the other room, I just-